Okay, Blaze, would you please recall the meeting to order?
Yes. Mrs. Kropaski?
Here.
Mrs. Mock?
Here.
Mr. Porter?
Here.
Mr. Sherwood?
Here.
Mrs. Smrek?
Here.
Everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Okay, Blaze. The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation, I recall, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yeah. Mr. Porter, if you would, please.
The vision and mission statement of the Austintown School. The Austintown Local School District is a united community with a proud legacy and a progressive approach to education. We provide an inspiring education that strengthens and prepares our students for unlimited future opportunities.
Item number five, there's a little date change here. Agenda approval. Upon the recommendation of the Treasurer, approve the agenda of the December 16th, 2021 Board of Education Regular Session.
Shall I move?
Second. Take the vote.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Item six, for some student recognition, we've got a group here for students serving veterans, if you would. Kristen?
Our Student Serving Veterans Group was organized in 2015 by a young 10th grader named Seth Welsh. He was instrumental in creating the shadow figures and the flags out front. So he came to me one day and said, "I want to start this group." And he said, "But we need some teacher, whatever, to be at our meetings and all that. Would you do it?" And I said, "Absolutely." As a Gold Star Daughter, it was just my honor to do that. So anyway, these kids standing next to me, it's a small group, we have one missing tonight, and he's ill, so he couldn't make it. So this is just a small group, and I just got to tell you about them. I hope I don't cry. These kids are absolutely the kindest, most generous and caring young people I know. Most of all, they're humble. They just do their thing, they come up with these ideas, they keep me busy, they tell me what to do, and I just do it. They ask for nothing in return. They ask for no recognition, no anything. They just come up with the ideas and they follow through. That's why I wanted to be here today to recognize them. I thought it was really important for our community to know that we do have this group and some of the things that they do, and I think you'll all be amazed. This is Alexis Davis. She is a senior, she's in all CCP classes and AP classes. She is involved in so many things, not just she involved in the Student Serving Veterans. She's in the Interact Club, National Honor Society, Key Club, Women's Chorus. She's been involved in the Student Serving Veterans for all four years of high school, and we call her our president. We have little Remy Karodi. She's a sophomore at Fitch High School, and she's the one that's going to have to take it on from here because these kids are graduating. Along with Student Serving Veterans, she plays softball for Fitch, the ACB, and Prospect. She is also involved in Fitch Women's Chorus, Drama Club, Stage Crew, Rock Band, French Club, and an Honorable Student. We have Nathan. Nathan is a senior, along with Student Serving Veterans, he's in Concert Choir, National Honor Society, Link Crew, Drama Club, participates at his local church, and will be attending YSU to study biochemistry to pursue a career in cancer study. Chase Kemp is our other student, he wasn't able to make it today, and he's in Men's Choir, Drama Club, Bowling Team, Key Club, ACTV Club, Interact Club, Academic Challenge, Vex Robotics Club. So they're busy. So now, not only do they attend a bunch of meetings, especially prior to Veterans Day, this year, we kind of, Jack Kidd and Ken Jacobach, the three of us kind of have been doing this for several years, we kind of sat back and said, "You know what, kids? This is on you this year. We wanted you to take over." And I thought they did a really nice job. The Veterans Program is honestly like planning a wedding. It really is. They do a spaghetti dinner. Unfortunately, we couldn't do it last year due to, you know, the COVID circumstances, but we plan on having it in February again if we can get the okay. The year that we did it, the several years that we did it, I think there were about 100 veterans that came, and we raised money to fund that program and pay for the spaghetti dinner, and then the kids did a really nice ceremony to honor all the veterans. And we have a couple new ideas for this spaghetti dinner that we'd like to do. They attend the annual of the Laying of the Roses downtown, and this year was pretty special. They decided, and this was, as a Gold Star Daughter, this just meant a lot to me, they decided they were going to stand at the end as the families went and laid the rose down, and they handed them this red thing with a Gold Star lapel pin for all the Gold Star families, and it's a thank you to the Gold Star families that were there who, you know, sacrificed their loved ones for us. So, I mean, I brought an extra, we'd like to see it, but it's a really nice message to our Gold Star families. When we were done with that, I mean, it was a tearjerker. The ceremony continued, and then afterwards, all of these families came up after they got a chance to read it and realized what exactly these kids were standing there for. It was a tearjerker. This one spoke to the news. She was a nervous wreck, but she went on because they asked me, I said, "She's the president, she needs to speak." She did wonderful. They put, we put crosses out every year. My husband built these white crosses with all of our KIA's from Austintown Schools and with their names etched in them, and they put them out front for Memorial Day and Labor Day, the kids do that every year. Patriots Day that Ken Jacobach puts on, we have a lot of kids that go and they participate in the choir on that day. For our Veterans Luncheon, Ken, again, gets all these veterans to come, and all of our kids get to eat lunch with the veterans, and my kids go to all three of the lunches, and their only job for those three periods are to thank our veterans for their service. We had an opportunity this year through John Valent, and it was a lot of fun. Remy and I went, and Remy's mom, she's right there, we went to the Respectfully Retire Flags with the VFW, and that was really an eye-opener, and we plan on doing that from now on. That was really a nice thing that they did. These kids, in the past, have put on pizza parties for our Purple Star Kids, and it was really cool to watch those kids connect, and, you know, that was really neat, too. The past two Saturdays, we did Toys for Tots. Nathan went the one day, this young lady went both Saturdays, I went last Saturday, and I had trouble, like, moving for the next three days. I can't remember, but it was like 20-some thousand toys that we sorted, and it was just really, really a nice event, but I give these kids a lot of credit for doing that. I'd like to mention John Valent, and Ray Schaefer, and Kathy Schaefer. They're here to present our kids with something today. John is the commander of the VFW in Austintown. He served in Vietnam in the United States Army. He was in the 173rd Airborne Brigade, and he was one of the ones that jumped out of the plane. Ray is the commander of the Ellsworth VFW. He served in Vietnam in the United States Army. He's a graduate from Fitch High School. He was in the Air Cavalry Infantry as a radio telephone operator, and both men have received many military awards. Kathy is Ray's wife, and she joined the VFW and was auxiliary under her husband. She was elected auxiliary president in 2015 and still holds that position. She was the district president from 2020 to 2021, and she serves our veterans in many, many ways. I'd like to bring John Valent up, he has something, and so does Ray.
Okay, I'm going to keep it short. I'm honored to be here tonight. Student Serving Veterans, they do so much for us throughout the community, not just the VFWs and such, but just veterans that belong to no organizations whatsoever, and every year, they look forward to the dinners that we have here, put on by them. I don't know if they realize how much they mean to us, but they're a great organization, and I, you could talk for a half hour or better about them, but I'll just read what we have on this plaque we'd like to present to them. Lieutenant Robert C. Dupola Memorial Post 4237 presents a certificate of appreciation to Austintown Students Serving Veterans, Austintown Fitch High School. With sincere gratitude, the officers and members of VFW Post 4237 want to thank you for your support to the school's Purple Star Kids and the organization of events to honor our local veterans and remain active in community programs involving veterans. Your services and accomplishments are too numerous to mention. Thank you, and like I said, you just do too much for us.
I'm a member of the Ellsworth VFW Post, and we have a small presentation to help the kids out. It's nowhere's near what they deserve. I know they do a lot, so. Have this for you?
Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. As he said, I'm Kathy Schaefer, I'm president of our local auxiliary in Ellsworth, Ohio, and as, we are also veteran supporters, that is what we do, but we also support our youth. So on behalf of my husband and I, I'd like to give you this check, help you out. Thank you.
John Valent also made a donation, too, so I want to make sure you know that. All we want to do now is we just want to say thank you for your service, and, you know, we will be there for you, all you need to do is ask. Thank you.
Item seven, Mr. Jacobach, Mr. Kidd. Toys for Tots.
Thank you for having us. I'm going to call up Jack Kidd in a second. I just want to thank the central office, all the building principals, staff, students, and especially the families. I'm blown away by what we collected this year. You're not going to believe it. I mean, it's mind-boggling, as many years as you've been doing it, and I brought along my two bosses, Staff Sergeant Sacha Colley and Corporal Walker. They're going to come up and present their words with Jack. Jack was up at your school so much this year, every day he was picking up toys, they thought he was a faculty member. They want to know what subject he taught, so.
Jack, come on up.
I've been doing the Austintown Schools for about seven years, and I never experienced anything like I experienced this year. Austintown Schools contributed 2,541 toys. Unheard of. These young Marines were flabbergasted when they heard that. Personally, I'd like to thank everybody in every school. They helped me count them, they helped me bag them, and they helped me take them to my truck. I'm almost 80 years old, and I can't lift some of those bags anymore. So, everybody in every school was phenomenal. You know, when you think about that, all these, it's not about winning a contest for me or Kenny, it's about all the kids on Christmas morning that are going to have Santa Claus visit, kids that ordinarily wouldn't. Right now, I'd like to tell you who won the contest. AIS. Soundly. Would Representative from AIS like to come up? These gentlemen want to present the trophy and a plaque.
That's great.
I just want to thank my staff and everybody who, you know, gets with the kids, and really, we really push the idea of trying to give back to the community, but Jack comes in all the time, and I know Ms. Pat calls you and tells you to pick up some toys, and I know you and Ken work real hard, as does everyone else who's affiliated with Toys for Tots, so thank you.
Last Friday, the woman in the office at AIS liked to give me a heart attack. She called me at 8:00 in the morning in a panic, said, "You better get here right away, they're everywhere." I collected that morning, just from AIS, 767 toys. Unheard of. And I think that trophy she's got, that's got all the year's winners on it, AIS is every one of them. Almost. Gentlemen, would you like to say something?
Good evening, everybody. I am Staff Sergeant Sacha Colley, I'm the Toys for Tots Coordinator for this year, and like Jack Kidd said, just seeing that truck, as soon as we opened it up, and it was full of toys, I was sweating unloading that box, that box truck. So, you know, I just want to sincerely thank everybody from the bottom of my heart for the effort you put to collect all those toys, and once again, I want to congratulate AIS on collecting the most toys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening, everyone. I'm Corporal Walker, I'm the Assistant Coordinator this year. I just wanted to say, on top of what Staff Sergeant X said, we appreciate it. The donations that you guys' schools bring in is astronomical, and it helps out the campaign. It goes right back here, even the monetary donations stay within Mahoning and Trumbull County. I've had the opportunity to work in this campaign for three years in Toys for Tots, and I've never seen a community come together like this to support its less fortunate, so it really is amazing. This will probably be my last year here in Ohio, so I just want to say thank you, I appreciate it. You guys, your donations are what make it happen, we just do the legwork. So thank you, appreciate all of you.
On item number eight, public comments, nobody signed up for public comments on agenda topics. Item nine, moving on to building reports. We'll start with Fitch High School. Mr. Mayarana, give us a little update on things.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. Winter sports are well underway, so that's been exciting. We wanted to extend a huge thank you to our custodial maintenance crew for completely remodeling the main boys restroom in the front. It's looking great, almost done. We have a lot of holiday events coming up that we hope you guys can join. We have the orchestra concert tonight, that's at 7:00, and then a holiday band concert Sunday night at 7:00. Spirit Week continues, the sixth annual one, next Monday and Tuesday with Ugly Sweater and Christmas Explosion. We have our annual student-staff volleyball game on 12/21, and then we have, and of course, exams have been made up this week, and they'll continue into the new year. Thank you, and have a great break.
The middle school update. Mrs. Cop?
Good evening, everyone. Well, we've had a busy month here at AMS. Last week, we held our annual spelling bee in person, which was nice because we got to actually invite families this year. A special thank you to Mrs. Kathy Mock, who served as our pronouncer, so thanks for taking the time to spend with us, and our judges from PTA, our English teachers, it really was a nice event. And special thank you to Zane from ACTV, he was here, he even came to my walk-through the day before for the run-through, so it was a pleasure working with him as well for parents that couldn't attend. Also, our grand champion, Peyton Summers, she will represent us at the Regional Spelling Bee in March, so we're very excited for her. It's hard to believe the holidays are right around the corner. Our concerts this month, or actually, this past week, we had band, choir, orchestra, so really got us into the Christmas spirit, so thank you to Mr. McLean, Ms. Cowan, and Mr. Pepino. Again, I think these were even extra special this year because, I'll tell you, these families didn't take a second for granted in being able to see these talented kids perform in person, so it was very special. Another thing that I'd like to highlight is our 6th and 8th graders this year are really getting into the spirit of giving. Mrs. Pam Burney's social literacy class, last week, their service project came full circle. They had to come up with a need in their community that they researched, and then they also had to come up with a way that they were going to alleviate the problem, and really what it led to is something we are so proud of. They were able to donate substantial amounts of things, clothes, scarves, hats, to Beatitude House, Toys for Tots, Pregnancy Help Center, Akron Children's Hospital, the Rescue Mission, and the life skills that these kids learned along the way was just invaluable. They made all the announcements, they printed the flyers, they made the phone calls to these organizations in the community, and the support was just overwhelming, and our pullback office was just overflowing with donations, and it was really something to see, so we're really proud of them. And they're continuing to spread that cheer right now by writing letters to the Austintown Fire Department to thank them for their service, so it's something really great to see. Finally, to continue the spirit of giving, Monday, December 20th, Santa Claus is coming to AMS, so we're excited about that. Kids will have a photo op with Santa Claus. Lynn and Mickey will be taking the photos, and PTA has stepped up and graciously offered to cover the cost of it. Special thank you to the Porter family, who is contributing things that is, we're having this fantastic backdrop with the Santa chair, and then, most importantly, the proceeds are going to go to Shop of the Cop and the Villanueva family, who is a family that's very near and dear to us and part of the Falcon family. So with that, it just reminds us to take some time this holiday season, spend it with our friends and family, and with that said, have a healthy and happy holiday. Thank you.
Ms. Owens, you're back up with the AIS update. No trophy? She could take that home, I bet. Put it in her house.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to, again, thank Jack and Ken and everyone at Toys for Tots, and everyone at the building, too, for really pitching in and helping out with that. We're happy to win the award again this year. We have a lot going on in the building. We have everything from Santa's workshop to ceramics, Falcon outreach and room parties, and I know that covers everyone from parent volunteers to PTA to teachers and students. Everyone involved helps make really special memories for the kids this time of year, and I think sometimes it's very easy to forget that for some families and some students, that feeling of belonging, making those items, the traditions that we do in the building, in the sense that all the people in the building really care, that might not show up at a data point or a test score, but sometimes it means more to them in their lives. The only last thing I want to talk about today is I really want to highlight one of my teachers, Ms. Jenny Houston. I don't know if any of you guys know her personally, but she's been an art teacher with us since 2009. Probably this is long overdue for Jenny, she just sent me some pictures this week. Her students made cards for Assumption Village, and they took pictures of the seniors opening them and reading them, which was very touching. Jenny also has visitors coming in from YSU's Competition Rocket Engineering Team tomorrow. Her students made projects for that group, and they're coming in to present and be with her kids tomorrow. Jenny always does all the Optimist and Rotary poster contests, she has a mural in the building that she's currently working on, she displays artwork every chance she gets, and she also works with the visual and gifted art students, and spends a lot of time, I know, on her off time helping those students out. So from being just a good team member, explaining a lot of teamwork, she has a passion for art and her students, and she never lacks in energy to go above and beyond to give to her kids. So she loves Austintown, and I just wanted to take a second to highlight her because she really is one of the people that I think exemplifies what AIS is all about, and that's going above and beyond. So that's it, thank you. Merry Christmas to everyone.
And Mr. Burney will give us an update at AES.
On behalf of the elementary school, we want to thank the board and Dave and Blaze, even though it's a no-brainer for you guys, bringing back in-school programs for kids, not just at AES but everywhere. Parents love it, obviously, especially at the K-12 building. I'm sure Harold and others can remember when we had our old elementary schools having the first-grade program every single year. Parents love it. We had three already, we have the final one tomorrow, have it during the day. And Al, Easy, they love it, love it, love it. One academic thing to share, our mid-year assessment will take place in January at the end of the first semester, and I'm going to impress you with words like phonics, phonemic awareness, and oral fluency. It just allows us to know if kids are on track, on track, who needs more intervention, who needs core one-on-one intervention, just like sports. So we're really proud of the tutoring staff, the staff members, and everyone else involved in that. Want to highlight something that's a pretty big deal for not only AES, but for the entire district. Kathy Dorvers, the head principal at the elementary school, she's nominated for something that most of us wouldn't even know exists, but we now know because we're using the reading curriculum this year. That's called the Science of Reading School Principal Award. I'll just take a very big thing and just put it in regular language, the reading program that we've implemented this year with the support of all of you guys and our building leadership team. Kathy threw her hat in the ring, if you will, as far as trying to be a national finalist for not herself, but for AES to be recognized on how well we're implementing this program so far. So she's one of three finalists. Forgive me for saying this first state, but Alabama, SEC land, just lets you know it's a big deal as far as nationally. So she's competing against a principal from Alabama, Wisconsin, and of course, she's involved. All of our staff members have received the email, and hopefully she'll win this through the electronic voting. And finally, and I'm absolutely going to do this, Robin, on behalf of Austintown Elementary School, we know you care about the entire district, K-12, but unashamedly, we can say that, we know that it begins with K-12. We want to thank you for everything that you've done for especially the little, little kids. Your daughter is a representation of how well the school system is, and we're not going to say you'll be greatly missed because you're going to still be there, but we thank you for all of your leadership, especially for the young kids, so thank you. And thank you, everyone.
Okay, item number 10, Mr. Bosch will give us an update on grounds and facilities.
Good evening. I'm going to make this short. Fitch Roof Project, it's been completed. We're moving forward with, we've already ordered all-new ceiling tile for in Fitch for both floors, top, bottom, that'll be on its way, so we can now replace that and brighten in, make more efficient our internally. We do have, as Sal said, we do have a new boys restroom project well underway, the new tile went in today, it's actually going to be grounded tomorrow, and we're moving there. We should be, that bathroom should be open by when the kids return. We did a big cleaning project from underneath the stadium. The guys worked hard on that for numerous days to get that, so we could get some busting in there for a little bit of protection. We have bleacher upgrades and reservices being done on AMS bleachers, both gyms, and Fitch, both gyms, some well-needed care and stuff being taken care of there. We have some security upgrades going on. Tommy Mantresco is working hard on those for our campus, and basically, I just want to say thank you to our staff that's working hard. And basically, I just wanna say thank you to our staff that's working hard to try to, try to maintain and keep our buildings where they need to be.
Perfect. Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Item number eleven, treasurer's consent items. Upon the recommendation of the treasurer, approve the following items A through C by consent action.
Second.
Take the vote. Mrs. Mock.
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski.
Yes.
Mr. Porter.
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek.
Yes.
Item twelve, superintendent's consent items. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the following items by consent action.
Second.
Mrs. Kropaski.
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Mock.
Yes.
Mr. Porter.
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek.
Yes.
Thirteen. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the following updated adult meal prices effective January third, twenty-two, for the remainder of the 2021, 2022 school year for adult breakfast, two dollars; adult lunch, four dollars.
Second. Take the vote. Mrs. Smrek.
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski.
Yes.
Mrs. Mock.
Yes.
Mr. Porter.
Yes.
Fourteen. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the Ohio School Boards Association annual membership dues rate, dues at the rate of seven-thousand-three-hundred-twenty-nine dollars for January twenty-two to December twenty-two. Dues are based on our district's cost-per-pupil data from ODE.
Second.
Take the vote, please. Mrs. Mock.
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek.
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski.
Yes.
Mr. Porter.
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood.
Yes.
Fifteen. Contracts and agreements. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the following contractual agreements between the Austintown Local School District and the following, Mahoning County Public Health, to support case investigation and contact tracing related to COVID-19. This agreement will be in effect for the 2122 school year until May thirty-first, twenty-two.
Second.
Take the vote. Mrs. Kropaski.
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek.
Yes.
Mrs. Mock.
Yes.
Mr. Porter.
Yes.
Sixteen. I'd like to approve the selection of Don Sherwood of President Pro Tem for the January twenty-two organizational meeting.
Second.
Take the vote. Mrs. Mock.
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski.
Yes.
Mr. Porter.
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek.
Yes.
I would like a motion for the next January session to be Thursday, January thirteenth, with a three p.m. organizational meeting, followed by a four p.m. work session, and then our five p.m. regular session.
Second.
Take the vote, please. Mrs. Kropaski.
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek.
Yes.
Mrs. Mock.
Yes.
Mr. Porter.
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood.
Yes.
Any comments, please?
Yeah, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and to thank Robin Kropaski for her four years as a board member here. It's her last board meeting, and for her service as an educator in this district for thirty-plus years. She was on this board when she brought Dave and I in. We appreciate that. It's been an absolute privilege, working with you these last four years. Good luck, and travel the United States with your husband and enjoy your kids.
Robin, easily, just thank you for your service and what you've done for four years. From the beginning, it's always been about Austintown kids and Austintown families. You love this place. It has shown since I've been here, and I know way before me, but congratulations on your retirement, finally retiring, okay? But, no, seriously, thank you for everything you've done for the kids and for the families here. It's, it's, it's been showing, it's been strong, and you've been great to work for and work with, so thank you for that as well.
I just wanted to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and I wanted to wish Robin congratulations on your retirement, and it's been a pleasure to work with you the last two years. Thank you.
I too would also like to thank Robin for her service to the Austintown Local School District. She has poured her heart and soul into this district as an educator of young children, and then continued her service here as a board member. It's been a pleasure. I think we got a lot of good things accomplished as a team, and I wish you all the best in the next chapter of your life. I know you're gonna have fun traveling. And I too would also just like to wish everyone here and at home a very Merry Christmas with your families and your friends, and I look forward to working together with everyone in the new year. Thank you.
Robin and I go way back. My wife used to teach with her at Watson Elementary School for several years, so I've known her for a long time. And she used to give me a lot of insight back when she was still teaching, about some things going on and that. And then, when she retired, I ran into her, and she's like, "You need help." So, she ran, got elected. We did some good things here over the last four years. I hate to see her go, but, you know, wish her well, and Merry Christmas, everybody.
I'll echo that. First, you know, as we're getting close to year-end, the time to be grateful and so forth, I'm grateful for what we have here, the team we have in place. Dave, you've been through a lot, and you've steered the ship through a lot of personal adversity, and I'm grateful for that. I know this board is, and this community is. So, thank you for all that you do, leading the way here. And Robin, you know, the changes that have happened here in the last four years, somebody's gotta be the tip of the spear, and I think you were that. And I, and I mean that in the best sense of the, of the word, because you, you got change done here that was necessary and needed, and I think we're the best that we've been in a long, long time. And you're a huge, huge part of that, and I'm grateful for that, so.
And I would just like to thank everyone, the community, for offering me the opportunity to serve on the board and as an educator for thirty-one years prior to being in this position. And hopefully, I did help to improve some things, and I will miss each and every one of you, but I won't be far, 'cause even though I'm gonna travel, I will always come back to Austintown. So, this has been my home my entire life, and I look forward to seeing all of you again soon. And good luck with everything, and I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Motion, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Yes.
Mrs. Mock.
Yes.
Mr. Porter.
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek.
Yes.
In association with Austintown Local Schools and Austintown Township.